All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 20th City Council Meeting. We do, don't have any announcements, but it looks like we have some folks here tonight.
Yeah, Council President Weingard, I apologize for not having this specifically listed on the agenda, but we're excited tonight to welcome a number of new officers to Fisher's Finest. And I'm going to ask Chief Gephardt to come up and share a few words, thoughts on this, and we'll go forward with the swearing in.
Appreciate that, Mayor and Council, and it's my fault it wasn't on the agenda, so get me for it. But we're here to welcome fifteen new officers to the ranks. This is a culmination of about the last year, year and a half. And interestingly enough, they, and see if I can get this right, but here's where they're all from. And yours is last on purpose, Brad. But we have probation department, we have National Guard, we have Marine Corps Police, we have I U P U I, we have Marion County Corrections, we have I U P U I, we have Marine Corps, we have Northern Southern Railroad, we have Atlanta, we have Chicago, we have IMPD Cadet, we have Rushville, and we have Bloomington PD times two. And last but not least for you, Brad, we have one from Greenfield PD. Yoder, could you raise your hand for Brad to see?
Glad you did a joke when I was mad.
So, you know, this is a time to come in so you can see them and you know who's going to be on the city streets. And I think this is a great night, we had them at the police station, we had dinners with their families who were all in the room, so we'll go ahead and do the swearing in, and then we'll get out of your way. Sound good? Raise your right hand, please. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Indiana, the laws and ordinances of the City of Fisher's, Indiana, the rules and regulations of the Fisher's Police Department, and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer to the best of my ability.
Yeah. This is the time to run. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, as they're walking out, we have no proclamations, no presentations. The Health Department report was detached.
John, just so you're aware, Elliot sent out an email to all the council about ten, fifteen minutes ago. We'll be sending a memo on the private roads discussion. We'll be attaching that on these council agendas from now on, just a monthly update as to where we stand on private roads. So that'll be out and attached shortly. We're calling it the Mike Colby Provision. Your roads. Updates on private roads, monthly. That's right.
Moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Should we do, do we need to do a roll call vote, Jenny, with Crystal being remote? Okay, why don't we go ahead? Sorry, folks.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
David Giffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Crystal?
Oh, Crystal Newman?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to planning and, moving on to government's item eight, zero one one seven two three, an ordinance amending chapter thirty of the City of Fisher's Court of Ordinances on council committees.
Nothing new to present on this item, just carrying it forward from the last agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to have second reading?
Second read.
We've had second reading, thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, which is the wood property annexation. Request to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the wood property annexation. They're voluntary, correct, John? Correct, voluntary. Do we need a report?
All right. Yeah, so this is, the first item is for fiscal plan adoption. Megan Bookstitch, Director of Planning and Zoning, for the wood property annexation. And then the item, I believe, number ten, is going to be for the final reading of that annexation. So we saw this last month for a public hearing, this is voluntary annexation. And they're just coming back before you for the fiscal plan adoption and then the final approval.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, we'll do roll call again, I apologize, folks. I want to make sure we include Crystal. Yes, we can. I couldn't. Let's do roll call.
John Weingart? Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Crystal Newman?
Aye.
David Giffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten, request to approve a voluntary annexation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. I'll do a roll call vote again, please, Jenny. You're going to work out tonight, aren't you?
John Weingart?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Crystal Newman?
Aye.
David Giffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jenny. Moving on to Ms. Smith, item eleven, zero one one seven two three B. Update the Fisher's twenty forty housing and neighborhoods to add recommendations from the housing study.
Yes, this is final reading for text amendment to the Fisher's twenty forty plan. You all saw this last month, it's an update to the housing chapter of the Fisher's twenty forty comprehensive plan. And this is really in response to the housing study that we completed early last year in incorporating the recommendations from Urban Partners, the housing consultant, on our overall housing strategy for the City of Fisher's. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions?
I have a few. First of all, I'm very glad that this will be added to our Fisher's twenty forty plan. Just by looking at these additions and weaving these priorities in, is there anything from your perspective that has changed from, from before? Meaning, like, has this been our priorities before? And now it's like codified in this document? Or are there some that you want to highlight, like, okay, this is going to change the way that we approach things in the housing issue?
So I might let Mayor Fadness speak to maybe the overall housing strategy, but I'll take a stab at just some of the changes since the housing study in general that I would say is being codified with this amendment. So a lot of the mixed use developments, when we look at higher density housing, we're really focusing those on amenity-rich mixed use areas. So that way it's better supporting those overall denser residential developments. So that's something that came out of the housing study as something that we should be focusing on, that we were already doing, but this codifies it with this amendment. And then I think what we saw with the housing study is that the rental numbers for single-family homes were going up. And so that we should really be paying attention and tracking those metrics of the rentals for our single-family homes. And so we're codifying that with this, and it's something we're working on internally still. But I would say those are kind of the two biggest changes since that housing study.
Okay, that's good to know.
I think this is a sound summary of a deviation from what it was before. I mean, I think that's accurate.
The one big finding from the housing study that was released January, last January, just over a year ago, was that we have a housing shortage. So I do feel like many of these points help address that. I do have a, oh, so, and I guess my first question then is, in terms of rental, this doesn't, rental properties, especially building new ones, does this change our philosophy on that or our priority on that? Or no, we are still very open to rental properties moving forward? Any adjustment there about rental properties, new ones?
I don't know if there's an adjustment from how we were looking at rentals with, with these additions to the Fisher's twenty forty plan.
Which is still an openness to rental properties, of course, right?
Yeah. I mean, you can look at, density of housing is kind of separate from that renter versus owner. And we've seen that we have a mix of both. We have single-family renter, and then we also have new denser housing that is owner-occupied. So it's somewhat of a separate conversation, but the density, the type of density of housing, I would say, is what was focused on mostly.
And I definitely understand from the housing study, like, hey, we're trying to get a portfolio of different types of housing options to not only accommodate our current residents who are moving to different life stages, but also new residents coming in. But we do have, like, I think almost every community in the state, there's a housing shortage. So some of these points address that. I have just one last question about one point in particular, and you just mentioned it. It's three point one point twelve. Maintain a real-time inventory of rental homes along with key property information, such as the name of the owner, current mailing address of the owner, history of violations, et cetera. So my first question about that was, like, we're, we're doing that already, right? Like, we already have some sort of, the city already has some sort of inventory or database cooking already with that information, right?
It's something that we're working on. I wouldn't say it currently exists to that extent that it calls out in this action item, but it's something that we are looking into.
Okay. And now it's a priority to gather that data and...
Well, that's a policy question that I think you guys are going to have to address in the coming months as we roll out the rental registration program. And so that's where a lot of this key information would be, the property, the behavior of the property. So are there lots of calls for code violations, police calls, things of that nature? And then ultimately, who specifically owns the property? So they're going to have to literally, on a rental registration form, they would potentially have to identify who has a financial interest in that property. All of that would be a consideration of this board as we move forward if we were to implement that policy.
So, okay, I'm glad you said that. And forgive me, I just want to be sure I really understand what we're approving here tonight. So is three point one point twelve, is that the rental registration, rental registration? Or is this...
It's a matter of how much information you would want. So on the aggregate, Megan could sit up here and provide you data metrics. How many homes are for rent today? If you want the specificity of which calls and who specifically owns the home, so if you want the complete makeup of who owns that property, if it's an out-of-state firm, if it's an in-state firm, do they have five different people who own the property? That's going to be another level that would have to be done through the rental registration program that has yet to be implemented. But if we're just talking about having metrics, let's say we have, I don't know, five thousand rental homes, and there were forty-two hundred code violations among those, that we could provide with the data that we have today.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So we still have work to be done, but, so I guess what I'm getting at certainly is, the more data that we have, the better we can make decisions moving forward. And this is a step there. And already some of that data has been collected because some of those findings or stats have been already presented by you and kind of got us to where we are today.
Yeah, this is really setting the objectives of what we're after. And then we still need to come forward with the specific policy of how we're going to tackle that objective.
Okay. And, and my last comment here is just making sure that data that is collected is then used responsibly. Just making sure that it is very precise and we're gleaning out of it what actually that data is representing for us. And I'll just make this last comment, and then I'll turn it back over to President Weingart. And that is, it's been said that, I have this note here, twenty percent of homes that were purchased in the last five years were renter-occupied. And, but according to the data, that also includes townhomes and condos. So when I say use the data responsibly, I want to be sure, like, we're just making the distinction. Townhomes, condos, we might think of regard a little differently than, like, single-family homes in the middle of a neighborhood.
I don't know why we, if those are, could be for sale, and instead they're rented, how, why would you view those differently?
Well, I, again, I think it's in the context, in terms of if we're concerned about single-family homes being turned from a homeownership opportunity to a rental opportunity, then I would say condos and townhomes probably are considered outside of that particular scenario.
I would still view townhomes and condos as single-family, but single-family attached?
Yes.
So, yeah, we could make that distinction if it matters, but if it's...
I think it's really more of a discussion about for sale versus for rent in the form in which they are, whether they're a townhome or they're a single detached, it's still the same conversation. Someone who buys their townhome in a, in a development, and then all of a sudden seven investors buy around them, might take exception to that. And so I think, again, this is, these are the policy things that we would need to tackle as we move forward. But I think the, the conversation that we had, the data points that we articulated still hold true, that of all the homes that could have been for sale, twenty percent, as you mentioned, were purchased by investors.
Right. So we're talking about how this informs policy. And later on tonight, we're going to talk about HOAs and their role in some of these policy decisions. So I just want to be precise about that. And of course, hoping that that data then becomes accessible for those individuals that want to see it, like me.
And I think, I think the other part about that we just want to be careful with and contemplate is, this initiative was never to stigmatize people who maybe rent a property. And so one of the things that we've, we want to be careful about is that we don't turn this into a witch hunt of an individual homeowner or property owner, or someone who lives in the neighborhood. So I do think there's, we need to be thoughtful about that data and how we distribute that, just to make sure that we're not turning neighbor against neighbor.
Well, I'm really glad, I'll conclude with this. I'm really glad you mentioned that because we're a community that is diverse and have diverse housing needs, and there's room for everybody. I think I'm the only renter on the city council, so I'm especially in tune to renter, the renter perspective. So anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to ask these specific questions. Thanks.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Selena. Jenny, can we do a roll call vote, please?
John Weingart?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Crystal Newman?
Aye.
David Giffel? Motion passes.
Thank you, Jenny. Moving on to item twelve on the agenda. Item zero two two, zero two three A, request to approve a voluntary annexation of point four acres known as the Wren Property.
Yes, this is a voluntary annexation, again, of a property in Fisher's. I believe this is first reading in public hearing, or is this the final?
First reading in public hearing.
First reading in public hearing.
Well, this might, we'll have a public, you, you, I'll go and have a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak regarding this matter can please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Give you three minutes to speak. Having said no one's come up, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have first reading, please?
First reading.
First reading, thank you, Megan. Moving on to item thirteen, request to approve a vacation of a portion of existing sanitary easement at IU Health Fisher's Hospital.
Yes, so this is, we're requesting first, second, third reading and public hearing, so we would be asking for you to suspend the rules and approve on first reading. But this is for a easement vacation, it's a sewer easement on the IU Health Saxony property. They're expanding their building, and so this easement vacation is necessary for them to relocate that line and build their addition. But it does require a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Megan?
I just have a quick question. You asked us to suspend the rules tonight. Can you just tell us why that's recommended tonight?
It's recommended, so we own the sewer utility for Fisher's now, and so our internal staff has reviewed this, and we don't feel, typically you have the public hearing and you notify those who have a stake in that easement. In this case, that's the city and then the property owner, both of who have agreed.
So we're all here. So we can just move forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions for Megan? If not, I'll, I'll open up a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come up to speak regarding this matter, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You'll get three minutes to speak. Seeing that no one's stepping forward, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to suspend.
I have a motion to suspend the rules. By Pete, do I have a second? I'll second. We have a motion to suspend the rules. Jenny, can you roll call vote to suspend the rules, please, on first reading, please?
John Weingart?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Crystal Newman?
Aye.
David Giffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. And we'll do a roll call vote again, Jennifer.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Crystal Newman?
Aye.
David Giffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jenny. Moving on to item fourteen, zero two two, zero two three C. Consideration of a text amendment to the U D O case number T A dash twenty-three dash two. First reading.
Yes, so this is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Currently, we require any common area for a new subdivision to be put in some sort of association, some owners' association, what's referred to as an HOA, for long-term maintenance of that common area. We're introducing a text amendment from Councilman DeRamer to require that any change to those covenants and restrictions for an HOA could be approved by a majority vote. So we have seen some existing HOA covenants and restrictions require seventy-five percent of the owners to make a change, and we're requesting that for any new HOA, that this just be a simple majority vote in order to make that change, to make it a little bit easier for neighborhoods to amend their covenants and restrictions through the years.
One point of clarification, that we would not be able to do this retroactively. So if you're in a current subdivision, we're not able to change the current covenants or bylaws of that HOA. This would be for only new development.
Well, I would assume no way you could do that under an old HOA is you have to go back to the members and get a majority of the members to authorize that.
Yes, correct.
Will this include Florida Road subdivisions?
It wouldn't, those were already approved, but we could ask those developers if they would incorporate this.
If we could ask them, I would appreciate if we could ask them.
We can make that recommendation.
Thank you.
And we certainly, you know, tonight's first reading, so we look forward to, as this gets socialized in second reading, plan commission, things of that nature, there's opportunities for stakeholders to raise their concerns, but we heard loud and clear from a lot of neighborhoods over the last year or two how hard it is to get anyone to show up to do anything collectively in their neighborhood, so.
Working with my subdivisions in the Northeast Quadrant, Gray Eagle especially, and Avalon, and Josh is here tonight, the president of Avalon, that hopefully you can speak at the end of the meeting, Josh, to this issue, because it's, it's critical. I appreciate it.
Well, it's a great opportunity for neighborhood empowerment to get folks to get engaged and get things done in their own neighborhood.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And I just want to also clarify that this is, the majority of the homeowners must vote, because a lot of times you end up with about ten percent of the people showing up at the HOA voting sessions, and it's not ten percent of the vote taken at those meetings. It would be the majority of the homeowners.
Yeah, that might be something we want to clarify in the language, because some HOA covenants and restrictions do allow a vote to pass with just those present at the meeting, and we wouldn't want to change that with this text amendment. So, thank you. I'll, I'll have...
Definitely something worth vetting at second reading, plan commission.
Because, you know, I understand certainly getting the majority of the homeowners in the subdivision, which does, would require work on behalf of the, the board there for sure. But I can see a lot of problems if you have fifteen people showing up and, you know, seven of them say yes, and then you still have a hundred out there who goes, I never got anything, what is this going on? So we need to be real careful about that.
It's a majority of all the homeowners, not who shows up at a meeting.
Correct. Brad, I'm in agreement with that.
You guys are in alignment, we just want to make sure the language says that.
Right. Yep.
We don't want three people getting...
Certainly looking forward to input from residents, especially, I mean, I see a couple of real estate professionals in our audience tonight that obviously understand this very well, been through it. If any other questions or comments?
I have, I have a few more questions about this. So this is a brand-new addition to the ordinance. And there hasn't been anything in our city ordinances prior to this that specify a percentage, a voting percentage for HOAs. Is that correct? This would be a new... So I, I will say that's one of my concerns, just HOA self-governance. I think HO, personally, I believe HOAs are probably best suited to determine kind of their, their parameters that they work within. But also, I think I'm, I have questions about if this is only for future HOAs, when they create their covenants, when the HOA themselves specify that percentage?
Well, I think it's, it's not like the founding fathers that wrote the Constitution. These are developers who write the covenants.
The first, the first round of...
And so if they put an eighty percent requirement in there when they do the first round, it becomes pretty difficult for when it gets turned over to the homeowners to be able to ever meet that threshold moving forward. So this is really a direction to the developers to say, when you're drafting those covenants, you need to put a lower threshold in there so that when residents, when that development turns over to the residents, they have a fighting chance of ever being able to change anything in that document, because otherwise, you just, to get eighty percent of the people to show up, they haven't been able to do it.
Yeah, the mayor explained it. The background is the developers create the HOA. In a situation in Britton Falls, we begged the developer for five years to change it, because there was only three that took the vote, to change it to fifty and refused to do it. Flips it. Most of the subdivisions in this city is seventy-five percent, Dell Webbs are at sixty-seven percent. So if we can force the developer to start at fifty percent, when it's flipped, the homeowners have a chance to get something done and changed.
Okay, I understand that.
And excuse me, but I'm dealing with six years of frustration with all my subdivisions. And I apologize, but I've been dealing with these thousands of homeowners in Fisher's in my Northeast District dealing with this, and the developers will not listen to us or accommodate.
I, I absolutely hear you. I think my perspective in this first reading is making sure we're not going further than is necessary. And you just answered one of my other questions, and that was, my assumption was, the fifty-one percent is a decrease from what HOAs normally have.
That is correct.
But, and you just spoke about Britton Falls. What I was looking for is some sort of, I, I would like to have a better understanding, like, what's most common? Is it sixty percent, seventy-five percent? Like, and frankly, is there a way to get the developers to bring that down to a reasonable level that gives homeowners a voice, but also gets, stops the stalemate for not being able to get things done? Is there a way to do that without having it be an ordinance, per se?
Reasonable is fifty percent. America is the majority, the majority owns.
Well, fifty-one percent, yeah.
Fifty point zero 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 one.
I, I, yeah, I think outside of putting in the U D O, it'd be very difficult for us to just say, please, could you do this on each development? I think it'd be good to put it in law that says this is what our standards are, as long as... And I think we'll go through this process like we always do, where if the builders want to come forward to the developers, they can voice that at second reading or plan commission or final reading. If their residents have concerns about, they'll have ample opportunity. I think this is just an idea that we've put up there to socialize and hopefully we can move forward with.
And one last question. The objective of this is to ex, what is the objective?
I, I think the objective is to create an opportunity for neighborhoods to be able to, residents to be able to make changes within their neighborhood and remove that artificially high impediment for some of those that have been set by people other than the people that live in that neighborhood, right? So that's really the, the only objective here, is kind of resident empowerment within their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I'll give you an example. In my neighborhood in Windermere, I think there's a seventy-five percent requirement to do anything within the Windermere neighborhood, and it's, it's over four hundred homes. And, and, and actually, our, our, our HOA board did a great job of actually getting seventy-five percent to implement some rules with respect to having rental properties within our neighborhood.[1792.18] to implement some rules with respect to having rental properties within our neighborhood, and that's an exception. Most of the time, you can't, most of the time, they meet, and they don't even have a quorum, and they can't really transact business. So, this gives an opportunity for these H O As to transact business, get things done that need to be done in their neighborhood. I do have, I have one question. If I recall correctly, Sunbless does not have an H O A.
Right.
If a new H O A is formed with an existing neighborhood, would we require that fifty percent as well?
Yes. Yeah, we could require that on a new.
So, I knew that. I mean, I lived there. I was like, I didn't realize when I lived there that they had no H O As, like I'm.
So, one of the other points, because we've got a number of subdivisions that are going to be probably forthcoming, I assume, right? Is they typically build in phases, and Brad's neighborhood is distinct with this, right? So, I don't, I want to be careful on how we word this, because typically what's going to end up happening is they say they're going to turn it over to the homeowners' association at a seventy-five percent build-out. I don't want them to include the extra twenty-five percent in that fifty percent number that Brad's put forward in this ordinance, right? I mean, if they're willing to turn it over at seventy-five or sixty-five or whatever that number is, it should be fifty percent of that number, not the total build-out number.
That would certainly help the residents that buy.
Correct. I mean, if we're trying to empower the residents, and I just see, because, you know, maybe it's just because lawyers think that way, right, Chris? So, you know, I know how they word things, and you can see that being up, and you're not there, you're not there at the fifty percent magic number, because you hadn't built it out totally.
Well, that would certainly help with some of the issues that we've had with turnover, where you get held hostage for an extended period of time as a resident, because they still own forty lots, right? So, that, let us work on the wording on that when we come back at, I guess, plan commission.
Yeah, Pete, talking about quorum, I think Avalon went, what, five years and finally got a quorum in its last meeting? Five years, could not even get a quorum.
Yeah, same thing at Windermere, yep.
So, I'm sorry, I have two last comments. One is, I'm absolutely understanding the objective. I, for me, I also want to just explore other pathways, just to be sure that this is the best option for us. Sounds to me like the obstacle here is that homeowners aren't participating in their H O A. So, one option is to lower the threshold of how much participation is needed, but it is possible that another option is, what can we do as city government to encourage homeowners to participate in their H O A? That could be another pathway. So, I do want to consider that and just be sure that we are doing the best possible work here. This would definitely help Britton Falls or would have helped Britton Falls. I just want to be sure we're looking at this very holistically, because that's one example. How can it possibly backfire on another H O A? And my final question is this. Do you know of any municipalities in Indiana that have added something like this to their U D O? And if so, I would be curious how that played out.
You know, I, I'm not educated on other community stipulations, so, no, I'm not, but I also have not sought that information out.
I would be.
A lot of other cities don't even require that you have an H O A.
Right, right.
So, it's a mute issue to those cities.
I know there's a state requirement for the threshold, but that's, but I don't know of any other community that has a municipal local level.
So, what's, there is a state require, I'm, this is, I'm learning here. What's the state requirement for the threshold?
Seventy-five percent.
So, are we able, are we able to go underneath that? Yes, we are. Okay. So, I mean, for me, I just want to be sure, like, if there are other examples out there. This is a new step for this municipality. I want to be very careful and thoughtful about how we proceed, so.
Well, we can do some research and see what other communities have done.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Motion at first reading.
Half, half first reading.
Thank you. Move on to item fifteen, zero two-two, oh, two-three D, consideration of rezoning to open space for the Geist Waterfront Park, first reading.
Yes, so this is a new rezone, and it is for Geist Waterfront Park, which is currently zoned as a P U D for what was going to be a former development years ago. We have since turned it into a public park, and so we would just like to clean up that zoning, get it aligned with our other public parks, which is open space. And this will really ensure that it remains a public space, but then also, as we reach the additional phases of build-out of the park, that we don't have to come and seek additional approvals from you all.
Megan, is there a reason why we're not doing all readings tonight?
We are legally required to go to plan commission for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Have first reading.
We've had first reading. Any other unfinished or new business? Brad?
A couple of things. One, with the fire station open now, the residents of Hunter's Run would like the path connected. That way, we go all the way from Cynthia Ann to Prairie Baptist. The school owns the property. I've sent a request to the school board and have not heard anything back from them. I assume they won't. Mayor, could we?
I'll talk to them.
Talk to them, or we pay for that and sign an agreement?
I think the only.
When they sell or build it, they have to pay us back?
I think some of this will be addressed, too, when we reconstruct one hundred thirty-sixth street. I think the opportunity to build a trail all along there when we redo that road might be a part of it. So, let me give adjacent coordinate on that, because I think we're putting trails on both sides all the way down when we reconstruct one thirty-sixth. That might fill in the gaps.
And did the fire station get a certificate of occupancy?
I would assume so. I'd have to ask.
Their, their path is not constructed.
I'll have to check in on that. They might be waiting, too, to have it built with one hundred thirty-sixth street.
Okay. The, one other thing, the Fishers Police came out and gave us the Flock presentation, and I've been working with the mayor and the board for two years on this. The people that were there, it's very interested in the information and the data that the police have supplied for catching the bad guys is just amazing. I would like if the board would consider this, to make it an ordinance, that the Flock has to be installed in all new subdivisions. And then, the builders are saying, the construction theft on builders is just getting out of hand. So, that would help the builders during the construction of the subdivision to cut down on the theft for them. And then, when they flip it to the homeowners, Flock's already installed and already set up. The other thing, if we do something like this, I would think we could sit down with Flock and negotiate some very nice prices, if they know every subdivision's going to have it in the city of Fishers.
Councilman DeRaimer, can you explain Flock to residents?
Chief of. Yeah, he's not here. So, Flock is a, it's a technology that's posted along public rights way typically, and it can read the license plate of the car that's going in and out of, let's say, a subdivision. We just recently had an arrest made on a burglary suspect that had fled to Florida, and we were able to identify the individual's car and track them literally all the way down to Florida, and we were able to arrest them. So, it's been pretty powerful. There are several neighborhoods, I think Cambridge, Cambridge has it, there are Hamilton proper's. A lot of these folks have purchased it on their, purchased it on their own. The only thing we would need to contemplate is there's usually an annual subscription of about twenty-five hundred dollars per camera, per year.
The H O A would have to continue to pay for that, yes.
So, we'll have to contemplate that, but it is a tool that's been very useful. And I will tell everyone, too, that, and Chris could probably touch on this, but there are policies within our police department on what data is accessible and how that's managed going forward. And literally, the cops can be driving around and all of a sudden get an alert in their district that tells them there's a felony warrant that just hit on a car, and they can go try to find that individual. So, it is pretty powerful. But it is not, it's not Big Brother in the sense of us tracking individuals day-to-day, that type of thing. It's nothing like that.
It's cameras at the entrances and exits of your subdivision that catches the license plate and the make and model of the car.
Well, let us, let us take a look at that, Brad, and come back to you with some thoughts on that in terms of what it would look like in the U D O. That's a new, new option. I don't know that we've ever looked at, so let's take a look at that and bring something back.
Chief Gifford said it would be great.
Yeah, I'm sure.
In the builders that are being ripped off, so. And then, one last issue that we, I get a lot of complaints at Britton Falls, the geese, they keep coming all the time. Unfortunately, we have a lot of paths in Britton Falls, and a lot of them are near the retention ponds. And especially when it's cold weather, the geese will walk up and sit on the asphalt paths, because they're warmer. And then, it's, it's a situation where some of our paths, we can't even walk, so there's so much goose, geese crap on the paths. So, is what I did in Greenfield, when I was mayor two oh eight, we passed an ordinance that all retention ponds had to have an eight-foot riprap, rock riprap around them. And Greenfield does not have any geese problems, because the geese's feet, for some reason, will not walk on those rocks. Now, once in a while, they'll fly over the eight feet, but very seldom will they even fly over the eight feet. So, we eliminated the geese problem in, in Greenfield by putting the eight-foot rock riprap around. So, just another consideration for future subdivisions to help with the geese problem.
Well, there might be an opportunity here to take these among some other U D O adjustments and bring those forward at the future council, maybe even have a work session.
I'd like to add a little bit on Brad's. In addition to the rock, the other thing you can put is tall grasses. The geese will not congregate on a pond that has tall grasses, because predators can be within those tall grasses. So, if you put the tall grasses around the pond, it doesn't attract as many geese.
If we could just get everyone to agree on the aesthetics that they want around their pond, we'll call it a day.
That, that would probably, we are going to try that. We approved last week. We're going to try one of our ponds and do that with the growth. We're going to try one and see what happens.
Councilor DeRaimer, you're talking about two different, totally different kind of flaks tonight, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
I think.
But, but the word flock from, from the camera company, we asked them, what does those F L O C K stand for? And they said, flock of.
Really?
Yes.
So, I think a work session, Megan, sometime in the near future with these, if you can bring forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one time, open up for community comment. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record and name and address, please, and you've got three minutes to speak.
Hi there, Mike Colby. I live at seven one zero five Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers, and I want to talk about private roads. No, just kidding. I want, yeah, I want to commend Megan and her staff for pulling together that ordinance. We struggle with that as an association, as John indicated. And your suggestion that maybe the city can do something, we can't get people to go out and vote, let alone what are we going to do to get them to come to an H O A. So, I really commend you. I just hope, well, I don't hope, I would like to see it be retroactive to existing H O As, but, you know, that's probably not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. That's short for you.
Hold on, no, 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 don't, don't, come on now, don't poke the bear.
When am I getting my private road?
Yeah, there we go.
There you go. There you go. You had to get that in. Thank you, Mike. Good to see you. Good evening.
My name is Josh User. I live at one two eight six three Shakespeare Way. So, some really exciting news in the neighborhood of Avalon, as Brad had mentioned. For the first time in six years since the turnover from our developer, we actually met quorum. The last time we met quorum was six years ago at that turnover meeting. Took two continuations, knocking door to door, hundreds of hours of volunteer time, and thousands of dollars in postage and mailings, and just more paper that gets thrown out that nobody pays attention to. This all really started back last year in twenty twenty-one. The current board that was serving at the time made some very unpopular decisions. Four hundred and eighty people came out. So, just baseline, we have eleven hundred and twenty-nine homes now. We have to have five hundred and sixty-five people show up just to have an annual meeting where we can elect a board of directors and approve the annual budget. A lot of people don't like to participate, and so this board made some very unpopular decisions. Four hundred and eighty people came out, which was not enough to unseat them, and that meeting very quickly turned contentious. All of you are voted and elected here to represent the citizens of Fishers, and I did some digging, and the last voter turnout number in the municipal election was like fifteen percent. So, as you can see, fifty percent is a really high hurdle to get to. I think this is really important to make sure that we sustain our neighborhood, because we do take care of a lot of services that the city would provide otherwise. We do snow removal throughout the winter. We maintain our street lamps, our street signs. We maintain our common areas, entryways, as well as ensuring that the homeowners keep up on their property, so it takes some burden off of code enforcement. I know there's legalities of what this council can do. However, you guys did approve, or your former body approved, the P U D when it was approved years and years ago. And so, this is kind of the situation we're in. So, I'm going to lean on you to help us find some legislative solutions to this. For example, there's another state that actually has codified on the state statutes a provision that allows organizations to have their quorum limits reduced by petitioning the local superior or circuit court, and that's managed on a case-by-case basis. And so, I would look forward to partnering with all of you and hopefully leverage some relationships at the State House. And I've got four hundred and eighty-plus people back in Avalon that would gladly come out and help support this initiative. So, look forward to partnering together and putting in some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else wish to come forward? Hello, Abe.
Good evening. I'm Abraham Wondergem and one six three three one Lower Valley Drive. As you all probably are aware, Fire Station, excuse me, I have a little bit of a frog here. Fire Station ninety-seven opened appropriately approximately one week ago. It was conceived on July nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and opened on February fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Tonight, I'm here in an unofficial capacity to represent my friend Armin Asadurian and the hundreds of families that reside in the Northeast District. We'd like to thank Mayor Fadness and his staff and all the departments of the city of Fishers who worked to make Station ninety-seven a reality. Also, we'd like to thank Chief Steve Arusa for the masterful job of managing Station ninety-seven project. And I'm glad I was able to say that while after all these policemen left. The transparency in which the project was coordinated by the chief was tremendous. The phone calls, emails, text messages, and the way too early in the morning breakfast meetings for this guy were, kept us abreast of the progress all the way in the station's projects. Personally, we'd like to thank the council for the unanimous support. Fire and emergency services for all of Fishers just became better. You acted correctly. You served and you provided for our community, something that the citizens could not do for themselves. State and national governments could learn from this, actually, I think. Rather than telling us how to live, what's good or bad, what's right or wrong, you simply took input from the community and executed to solve an issue. It was a fine example of citizens and government working together, the reason why actually we're all here this evening. Again, Armin and I would like to thank all of you here assembled and for all of the residents in the Northeast District now living and future development scheduled. Safety and value were brought to our neighborhoods, and we look forward to seeing you when the city schedules the grand opening. It is a marvelous facility. It's state-of-the-art. It's beautiful. And the people that are manning it, they're top shelf out there, and I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you, Abe. Certainly, the Britton Falls Jihad certainly made that happen. You guys did an outstanding job of promoting.
We're known as the Godfather.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anybody else wish to come forward? Good evening. You need to name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Tease, one four zero eight three Mimosa Court. I just wanted, I wasn't planning on speaking. I just wanted to jump in real quick, just some of the questions that came up about the U D O. There is an organization called the Associations Institute, Community Associations Institute, which I just was asked to join. So, I don't know if, if you're familiar with that. I was not aware of it until, until I joined it, but we also, I'm also serving on a Legislative Affairs Committee that works on legislation around communities and homeowners and associations, working with the state. So, one of the things that we're working on is lobbying the state to update and modernize the current Homeowners Association law in the state of Indiana. And a lot of it is to allow for associations, to make it easier for associations to meet and meet a quorum through electronic voting, through virtual meetings, all these things where a lot of associations are prohibited from doing that currently through their covenants. So, just wanted to make the, the city council aware of that. There is an organization that's working for, to address some of these issues, working at the state level and at the local level.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Since there's one else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion adjourned. I have a second. All's a favor, so you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Aye.
Have a great week, folks. Bye, Crystal.